Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Ruth, and I will be the chairman for tonight's meeting. I'm welcoming you to the March 27th, 2023 Board of Adjustment Public Meeting. I'd ask everyone to stand for a flag salute and moment of silence.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act. As adequate notice of this meeting has been posted by mailing the annual schedule of meetings to Union County Local Source and the Star Ledger. By posting such annual meeting notice schedule on the bulletin board in the town hall reserved for such announcements and filing of said notice with the township of Clark, formal action may be taken at this meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mark Hayden. Thomas Mead. Douglas Crock. William Helm. Chris Tierney. And Ed Ruth.
First out of our business, we will review the minutes of our last meeting. May I have a motion to approve? All right, Tom Mead has issued a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Bill Helm, seconds.
Thank you. Any correspondence? Janet?
No, there is not.
None. All right. All right, so we'll get to the business of tonight, which is calendar case 3-23 on Mr. Dominic Pardo of 33 Lincoln Boulevard, Clark, New Jersey. Mr. Pardo? Want to swear the name?
Can you both raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the truth you are about to give in this matter is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Can you both state and spell your names on the record?
Dominic Pardo, P-A-R-D-O.
And Roger Grutzmacher, Dom's architect. You need addresses or anything?
And since you're the architect, your license in New Jersey correct? And your license is current?
Yes.
Great. So you can go ahead and present your case.
Yeah, real quick, very quick. I think Dom's going to explain a little bit about the project, and I'm here mostly to address the issues brought up in Mr. O'Connor's report. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pardo.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
So I guess I'm explaining the expansion of the garage. We, it started off, we had, the garage was starting to fall apart a little bit on me. The main roof started falling apart, so I went to repair the roof, and from there, kind of snowballed into the project that it became now. Basically, that's what it boiled down to. We needed the extra storage space, and we owned the house right next door, number 37 as well. Both houses are two-family houses, which are kind of odd in that area. So parking is a real premium and, and storage. I have four kids, and it seems like every time we turn around, we're always trying to find somewhere to put the bicycles, the snowboards, the this. So that's kind of how it all evolved from that.
Were there a garage on your property when you purchased it?
Yes, yes. The garage was there on the property, the, the main section of the garage.
The main section?
Yep, yep.
And you tore that down?
No, not the whole garage, just the roof. We added, so basically, the main structure of the garage stayed. It was a masonry block garage, and the roof was wood. That's where the problem really had started, where the roof started to kind of give on, give in on itself. So we just, we put a new roof on it and expanded it to the side. There was about a 10-foot or 12-foot section to the left of the garage that was just a grass area there, so.
When did you expand that?
I'm sorry?
The portion on the left-hand side?
Yeah.
When was that expanded?
It was expanded, I guess, about two years ago, about two years ago.
I was curious. One document that we were given to look at was a survey, and it was showing the entire garage as part of the survey, but the survey isn't dated, or nor does it indicate where it's filed. Do you happen to know?
I had done that survey as part of the application. We had to renew the survey because it was really old, and we wanted to include everything that was on the property, so I had the survey redone.
So that would have been back in?
I guess that was 2019 or 2018, somewhere around there.
That shows the complete structure from?
Correct.
Side, yard to side yard. Yet on the plans, T1, you're showing that area that you were talking about to the left.
Correct. That, that extension is shown on that survey.
Okay, as an addition, but it already exists.
Well, yes, because it was, I had done it before the survey.
You had it done before the survey? And your plan was to have that approved as an addition? Now, you had approached Mike Coda back in 2019?
Yes.
And he denied your permit to expand?
Correct. And that's when I went for the original variance, and then COVID had hit, and everything kind of came to a screeching halt.
And didn't Mr. Coda, at that point, say that you couldn't build into that?
Without a variance.
And did you?
I'm sorry?
Did you build anyway?
Well, that was already done. He, he had come in, stopped the work, and now that section was already done. So we basically stopped the work there, and then, and then, you know, Mike said, listen, you can't do anything else. You have to go for a variance in order to complete it, so. So now, basically, the, the roof is on there, and we got a tarp, but it's not completely weather tight. We, we put some, like, Tyvek paper on it, just to kind of keep it together till we could try and get the variance going, and then finish up, obviously, the rest of the sheathing and siding, and basically, complete the garage.
And when Mike was out on leave, you also approached Tom Kelly?
I'm sorry?
You approached Tom Kelly as the acting construction officer?
The first time?
The second time, after Mike Coda had denied you expanding the garage.
Right.
And then in 2020, you went to Tom Kelly, who was then the acting construction officer. He also denied your request.
Correct.
Is that correct? When did Mike tell you that you had a cease and desist from doing anything further?
Basically, back in 2020, it was cease and desist. And then, he was back out there, we, because it was so long between the time of us going for the variance, we, we had to put some additional sheathing to secure it, because it was starting to get, you know, weathering and everything else. So he was back out again. He said, please make sure you follow up and go in for the variance and, you know, finalize the architect. Roger's been working with me over the last couple of years, you know, helping me with the survey and getting the architectural drawings and all of that in order, till we got the time to get in for the, for the variance.
Were you aware, when you put up the walls, that you were going to be violating, if you, lack of better word, the different setbacks that would be required?
Yes, yeah. Once Mike stopped me and, you know, explained to me, listen, you got a certain issues that you have to deal with, you have to go for a permit, you have to get, see what needs to be done in order for this to go forward.
And with COVID and all that, it wasn't until January that you resubmitted?
Correct.
Again? Any board members, any questions for our applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. It says here that part of the reason for this is that for the overhead door facing the VFW property to provide direct access to that property, and it also states for the reason to do work on that property.
Yeah, so I own the two houses, 33 and 37 are right along one another, and both the properties are basically in the parking lot of the VFW. So for the last 20 years, we basically, we keep that whole back area clean. They've changed many commanders there, and between parties and the grass overgrowing, that area gets really, really bad. So we basically use that part, like, if we had a party at our house or something, we would park in the VFW, and then we would clean that area, cut the grass for them, maintain, basically, the parking lot for them, keeping the gas cut, trimming the bushes. And so we would take our lawn equipment and everything out of the back of the garage and go around and do that. So that's why I had originally put that door there.
Okay, it says here, in order to utilize this door, the applicant needs to encroach under the, the applicant must obtain and file an access easement.
Speak into the mic, please. Speak into the mic louder.
It states here, in order to utilize this door, the applicant needs to encroach on a VFW property. For, the applicant must obtain and file an access easement from the VFW to allow the continued use of this door. If that's a sticking point, I mean, I could always close that door up. I, I have a gate in my 37 property, which we were taking a lawnmower out of there. I, so, I mean, if, if that was a, an issue, I could always close that back door, that wouldn't be an issue to do that. I would just have to use the access either going around, like, Lionel Street and coming in, or using the gate that I have on my 37 Lincoln Boulevard property. I have a gate there that comes out of my backyard into their property, and that's how we would, we'd bring the weed whackers or the lawnmowers or cleaning that area up with. That won't be a problem.
If I could add to that, I don't, are you, do you, are you paid to do that?
No, no. I, I, basically, they went through so many commanders back there, and it's always been an issue where cleaning it, they'd have parties, and there'd be glass bottles. So, I mean, my kids learned to ride their bikes back there, it just became part of us, you know, being there for so long. I just felt like it was kind of my thing to do, to keep it clean, and it was just better for everybody, so we just kept it up.
Are you talking about property that's on your side of that fence, or on the VFW side?
On the VFW side of the fence, yeah, because my...
Isn't that like a driveway?
No, there's actually, like, a strip of grass that's about 10 or 12 feet wide between the parking lot and my fence.
Mm-hmm.
And that grass would overgrow, bottles, all kinds of debris in there. So over the years, I just was able to keep that clean. I would put mulch in there, cut it down. It was good for us, too. We have a pool, because in the summer, we get a lot of mosquitoes from the tall grass. So it was a kind of a mutual thing. The VFW was happy we were doing it, and it was, it worked out good for us, because it kept that area nice and clean, so.
That grass area behind 37 or 33?
Both, both houses. The VFW parking lot is actually, the parking lot is behind 33 and behind 37. 33 runs, like, the middle of, of Link, of Lincoln to Lionel, and the VFW parking lot is from Broadway, so they have their building on Broadway, and then their parking lot starts, basically, at the back of 33. So all of 33 and all of 37 is behind, behind us, the parking.
My observation of the parking area for the VFW, that is all macadam?
Yeah, the parking lot is macadam.
I didn't see any grass.
Yeah, there's, there's a strip of grass between my property and the parking, and the actual macadam. There's about a 10-foot strip that runs straight down. Actually, I think you could see it in, in part of the property there. It's usually, now we cut it down, and I use, like, a mulch. Yeah, if you, if you look at, if you, if you want, I could come up. Yeah, so if you look at Mr. O'Connor's photo, this is the, this is the 33 Lincoln Boulevard, and there's a strip of grass. See, that's the blacktop from the driveway. There's a strip that runs all the way down and to Lionel. And we do the, I mean, we do the back of the VFW as well, not just that strip, because the Lionel Street, there was a bunch of old trees that fell down, so we cleaned that all up. At least twice a year, I do a good cleanup in there, and then every other week in the summer, we cut the grass or mulch it and keep it clean.
And you have an agreement with the VFW to do this, or have you ever asked for them?
No, I mean, yeah.
It's on a handshake, I guess.
You know, like I said, after 20 years, the kids learned to ride their bikes in there. We have a camper in the summertime, when we go to leave with our camper, they actually let us pull around the back so we could load it up. It, it's just a really convenient situation for us, so it's kind of, one hand washes the other type situation. After, after COVID, I, I'd be honest with you, not a whole lot goes on there anymore. In fact, a few times, we had a call, because there was guys coming back there, they had, like, an old dumpster, they would just throw trash. Then when the dumpster was full, nobody would pick it up. So we tried to keep it as clean as possible, because, again, it's like our backyard, so. And again, the whole purpose of that door was just for us to be able to get in and out of there a lot quicker with any lawnmowers or weed whackers, or, and it's convenient for us as well, so we don't have to go all the way around, so.
Now, I guess, if it's okay with everybody here, do you want to kind of walk through the application and the relief you guys are seeking? I guess, based on the technical review report?
I brought a copy of, exactly the same, so I don't know if we need to mark it in or anything.
Mr. Grutzmacher, are you also acting as Mr. Pardo's planner in this?
No, just as architect. As, as Mr. Pardo explained, it's an addition onto the garage for, for additional storage. Yeah, the garage door was added.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Could you put that mic on right there that you?
Can you hear? It is on.
Yeah.
I guess I can pick it up. Just referring to drawing T1, there's a site plan on the, on the bottom of the page that shows the addition, and here, I've highlighted it in green. It just crosshatched on the drawing. It's approximately 322 additional square feet. I can't lift that up, sorry. And up on top, we're showing the elevations that face the house, which is the rear elevation, and the front elevation. I'm sorry, the rear elevation is what faces onto the, the VFW property, and the front elevation would be facing towards the rear of the existing house. We were, we were called in after, obviously, construction had started, and we prepared this specifically for the, the zoning application. There would be additional details that would have to be prepared for, for actual building permit. And one of the primary things that have to be done, which is according to Mr. O'Connor's report, we'd have to address the drainage issues here. And we will absolutely retain a civil engineer to come in and take a look at that, because there, I know from, hearing from Mr. Pardo, the new pipe, I don't know if this is accurate or not, Mr. O'Connor, but along Lincoln Boulevard, new storm had been put in there a couple of years ago, maybe several years ago. So we could somehow tie into that, but that'll be part of the, part of the review, to see if that's something that we can, we can use and not adversely affect that, because there is additional impervious here, obviously. The, the height of the structure, we don't, it's 16 feet high. It's, it's now existing, as you can see, and the exterior materials on this, right now, the, it's, you know, it's basically just a very basic storage garage, which you can see from the photographs. But on the new addition that's going up above and on the elevation that would be facing the property that would be to the east, towards, towards Broadway, it's all hardy siding, four-inch composite siding, clapboard siding type, type of look, fascia board on top, and it's a very slow, low-pitched roof, so there's no gables, it doesn't exceed the 16-foot height here. And with that, if there are any, any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
How would you address the siding side issues as far as setbacks that are required now by the town?
Oh, yeah, we, obviously, the, a number of variances are required here. As I mentioned, we were brought in after the construction had already begun, so this is what's there now, and we're asking that they be granted, or take upon advice what you would recommend here.
And the one setback on the 37 Lincoln Boulevard, the other side of the garage, that was a zero setback, that was right up against my 37 Lincoln Boulevard property, that's actually part of our property line on the one side, that was existing, so.
With the prior garage that was there before you?
Correct, correct.
But the garage was not expanded towards the VFW property until it was done in 2019?
No, it was to the VFW. It was to the VFW, so basically, it was on the property line of the VFW, and then the property line of 37. The expansion went towards the, the Broadway side of the property.
The Broadway side is the VFW parking lot?
No, that's, I would be heading east, okay? With north being due up the page, okay? We've made, the, the existing setback that's there, the pre-existing condition of one point of the, I guess it's 1.19 feet, is being maintained across the entire property. We're not coming out beyond that.
Yeah.
The same thing is true of the right setback, but of course, obviously, the left setback has now been changed to 0.54.
Well, the existing side setback to 37 is 1.4 feet. Now, the neighbor to the right, the setback is going down to only about six inches. You can't even squeeze through there.
Talking about towards Broadway?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's not even noted here on T1? I don't see it anywhere anyhow.
It's noted as 0.54.
Not under the site zoning bulk requirements anyhow.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I didn't see it under the site zoning bulk requirements anyhow.
Now, for everybody, I guess I'm just going to also go over the standard of proof for these items, just so we have it on the record, if that's okay with you all? So the standard of proof for use variance, and that would be the expansion of the non-conforming two-family use, or allowing also, if there were a commercial business in a residential zone, so that falls under NJSA 4055D-70D, in that you have to establish special reasons for permitting the use or expansion of the use where it is not permitted. You have to show that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public, good, and will not impair the intent and purposes of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance. Then we also have the standard of proof for the bulk variances. That includes for the size of the garage and the violation of the setback requirements, as well as the lot coverage requirements for the garage. And that falls under NJSA 4055D-70C, and there, you're required to establish that there's a hardship related to this property, not to the owner, but to the property, that requires the variance, or that the purposes of zoning would be advanced by a deviation from the ordinance requirements. Or show that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And just for note, the purposes of zoning include to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement, and to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions. Just so you guys have that to keep in mind while you're discussing.
Mr. Pardo, I know that you are in construction.
Yes.
Is that garage used at all as part of your business?
No, I have a, a commercial yard in Old Bridge, a big one-acre yard that I keep all my excavators and equipment in. The garage is basically our storage, our bicycles, our vehicles, just home stuff, lawnmowers, stuff like that. So we don't do any work, or we don't even keep any equipment there at all.
I just have a question. I'm trying to kind of understand the sequence of events. There's a lot of paperwork here, and I'm just trying to make sense of it, and also in the context of when you said you had, you had built the addition, the additional roughly, what is it, 10 by 30 maybe, over to the left, if you're looking at it from behind. But when was the original 500-some-odd-square-foot garage there, and at what point in time was the addition put in, roughly, within months, right? I guess those are two questions, and then I may have a follow-up.
So, I'm sorry, the first question, when was the original?
Yeah, the original 500-some-odd, the one that had the one pre-existing of one and a half foot from your other home, right?
So, so that garage has been there, we bought the house in 2005. If, if you look at the picture, the section that's all painted white in the picture, I don't know if you can see that?
Yep.
That, that was all the original garage. That, that's been there since we purchased it. It's probably been there, I guess, frankly, we lived there for, yeah, I mean, as long as we could remember. We lived there since 1999, and that garage and the house has been there. What I added was, if you look at the photo, is, is just to the, basically, the part that looks like cement.
Yep, I see it.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so it was original, right? So the attorney here just...
Yeah, T1 is that 529 square feet that's, that's shown there?
Yep, yep, yeah, it's that, that was there with the original house, I believe. You said 60 feet, right?
The original garage was redone in 1962.
Okay, and that was a standard, what, 10-foot, 10-foot height at the time, the second, this, this additional?
No, it was, it was a 15-foot high, just that the, the ceiling was a hip or a gable, a hip. Yeah, so basically, it came down on four sides, and the height was the exact height that this roof is now.
Okay, so that's there for, for easily 15-plus years since you bought the house?
Yes.
And it goes into somewhat disrepair, right?
The roof itself, the masonry was in good shape. The roof had started to, they used, they undersized the wood, and it started to kind of collapse in on itself, and that's where it all kind of snowballed from there.
And that happened about when? When, when you noticed the disrepair and then you?
About 2017, 2018 is when I first started noticing it.
Okay. And then, and is that the time when the addition was put on, the, the side, as well as the, I guess, the additional up top, right? The windows and all that that I see there?
Correct.
That was around 2017 or 18?
Uh, 20, 2017 is when I noticed the roof starting to go bad. 20, like, 18 or 19 is when... 20, like 18 or 19 is when I, I started to do the work.
2018, 19. And that was before or after an initial, I guess I'll call it consultation with-
That was before, that was before. So I did the work, basically, it was to this point, except for the tivac on the, on the windows, and then that's when Mike came out and said, no, you gotta wait, you gotta go for a variance, you know, you gotta stop working.
Right. Were you not aware that, that there would be setbacks and, and permits required?
Yes and no. So I knew that I could do the roof without the permit, because roofing was, but it kind of snowballed. I'll be honest with you, this is like a weekend thing. It started off as I could get this roof done right away, and then it just kind of snowballed from there. I should've known better, I should've stopped 100%. I, I did talk to Mike about it, you know, after the fact. And, and I knew I had the one setback on my property, it's, it's right on my property line. I, I don't know-
Yeah, on the other side, yep, yep, I got that.
Yeah, it's literally right there.
But this side is going to another neighbor's, which-
Correct.
Which is not your property, right? And-
Right.
I guess, was there any consultation of them, just more out of curiosity? I don't think it's a matter of-
No, not rea-, I mean, that's my property there. Up to that white fence is basically, so it's right on my property line. So up, up to that, there, that white fence is actually my neighbor's fence.
Yep, yep, yep. The one where you're going up to six inches of it, right?
Right, right.
The fact that you didn't speak with Mike beforehand, you went ahead and built that without any permits?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah. I put the horse in front, the carriage in front of the horse, and I should've-
As a construction person?
Yep. Sometimes I, I get a little ahead of myself, and, and that's where we're at now, so.
And at that point, did Mike tell you that you were right on the property line, and you couldn't build it?
Correct. Well, he didn't say exactly, he didn't say exactly what it was, he just said, you know, bring in a set of drawings. And then at that point, that's when I was, you know, we knew that because the house was a two-family, and then it was a non-conforming, it was a small lot. I mean, there was a bunch of issues before that addition, you know, kind of took place. The whole, my property next door is 125 feet, this lot's a 40-foot lot. And then the corner lot, I think, is another 125. So I'm kind of saying, which then, the house has been there since, I don't know, probably the 1900s. So it was a non-conforming, and that's when Mike, you know, bring up, listen, you have all these setback issues and impervious coverage, and you gotta go for the variance.
Did you suggest at that time that you may have to make that garage smaller, in order to comply with the-
He said, he said that I would have to go for the variance, and then see which way it kind of turns out. Again, adding the extra square footage, yes, so. I, I tried to maintain the height so that I wouldn't go higher.
Right.
But it obviously went over, so.
And what is our minimum requirement for a side setback? Five foot?
Yeah.
Mr. Ruth, if you look at page two of the engineering report?
Yes.
There's a listing of the variances-
Right.
Versus the township requirements.
All right. Yeah, lot coverage, existing building is 36%, and the proposed is 44. That's the first issue. Impervious coverage, the existing is 63, and the proposed is 71. Minimum side yard is five foot. And existing on one side is 1.4, and the other is only 54 inches, 0.54. And the rear setback is five foot. In order to comply with that, you would have to do some major tearing down and rebuilding.
At that point, the garage is deemed pretty much useless. I mean, if I had to come off the back property and the side property, I'd end up with, you know, basically a shed back there, so.
And if you read a little further down in the garage section, the ordinance requirement for a garage is a minimum of 240 square feet, not more than 300 square feet for one car, and 650 square feet for two-car garages. The existing garage is 529 square feet, and the proposed garage is 851 square feet. So the, we had requested that you present testimony in support of the variance. There's key legal terminology that probably needs to be entered into the record, as the attorney stated previously. Mr. Gertz-Macher's not a planner, but he's been around the block a few times on applications like this. I don't know if he's prepared to try to enter that, those special reasons into the record in support of primarily the use variance for the expansion of a non-conforming use.
Just to answer the question, at this time, I, I am not, I didn't plan to come here as a, as a planner, or to offer that testimony, but I certainly, we could absolutely see what we can do about getting the services of a planner to supply that.
I, I don't know how the board feels about proceeding without the applicable planning testimony in support of all the variances. I don't know that we can elicit from Mr. Pardo or Mr. Gertz-Macher enough to keep a clean record.
This is in reference to kind of meeting the standard of proof that you read through, right? Okay, yeah, okay, got it.
I, I guess what we're saying here is, it would be typical in a variance case like this, that the applicant would come before us with a planner to present very specific testimony, to say how what you were proposing was consistent with the overall area, met the goals and objectives of the township's master plan for some reason, and that there was positive and nega-, and no negatives associated with the application. And, and that that testimony would be given to the board for their consideration.
I understand. I guess it would have to be explained in like legal terms, and a clean definition of what we're looking for.
Just to add, as Mr. O'Connell said, I have been around a little bit, and I was a planner, but I've never kept that license up. I could stand here and try to answer some of the questions, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be acceptable, I think, to the board. What I would like to do, though, is get, solicit information from a planner, and see what, what we can come up with here for you to consider as part of this application.
I, I think one of the things that you should also do, assuming that you're going to ask to adjourn and come back with additional testimony with, from a planner, would also be to speak with the VFW about the possibility of an access easement or not. If you were able to enter into an agreement with the VFW that would ultimately be filed in the county courthouse, that could help your case in trying to, it's highly unusual for a two-family property to expand their garage like this, and have the garage access to an adjoining property directly.
Totally understand that, yeah.
And if you were to sell the house, then your reasons for needing that were no longer there, and that condition would continue to exist. So if that door were to remain, the VFW really has something to say about it.
Of course. Any other, the solution Mr. Pardo already offered might be easier just to block it up and-
Yeah. I totally understand, if I go to sell the house, maybe the guy who buys it might not be taking care of the VFW like we have for the last 20 years. So, I mean, for me, I could just as easy close that off, and just continue using the gate for the cleanup and what we've been doing there. So I, I don't have an issue with that as well. I mean, I could talk to them, we don't plan on going anywhere, we, we've been there for 20 years, and plan on not going anywhere, so. But if that's the case, I totally understand, whoever may buy the house, they may say, well, what are we gonna do with this door? Or how are we gonna get granted access to it?
That's why, if there was a formal access agreement filed at the county, then the access runs with the land. But if the VFW did anything with their property, any future development of that site would also have to respect that easement and the access to your door. So.
Yeah, we, we understand.
Totally understand.
Rich, you mentioned earlier about getting the drainage. Would that be something that should be done with the planner, or how does that-
Had, had Mr. Pardo submitted a building permit application, and gotten the permits to construct this, he would have been required to submit topography, and to show that the stormwater management of his site was not adversely impacting adjoining properties or the neighbors. So that step was skipped in this regard, and that information still hasn't been officially provided, so.
And that would, we would include that as part of the permit application. As a matter of fact, you've adopted the new standards, correct, Clark? The stormwater management, the state?
Clark has the new flood damage control ordinance in place. The new stormwater management standards aren't going to be adopted until sometime between April and May. They were draft, they were promulgated in preliminary form in December. The state has taken comments, is currently considering those comments, and should be publishing a final version of their rule at some point in the near future, depending on how they've addressed the comments, or what work they're doing because of the comments.
If we were doing a post-foman, that wouldn't even come into play at all, the new regulations?
The regulations typically require that major development, as defined by the state, is subject to those requirements. The, for people who are not major development, the easiest explanation is, there's language in there that says, if you can't meet these requirements, you've got to try to do the best you can. So this, this is a developed property in a highly developed area, adjoining a bed of asphalt. Mr. Pardo is gonna have to show that the runoff from his 322 square feet isn't gonna have an adverse impact. As Mr. Gertz-Macher said, there's storm sewer in Lincoln Boulevard, I'm pretty certain that there's storm sewer in Broadway. That Mr. Pardo should be able to direct the runoff from the new roof to, through the curb, or directly into a catch basin system, and by virtue of doing that would be sort of the best that he can do, to show that his work is not going to have a detrimental impact on adjoining properties.
Also, if you adjourn, and you want to come back, as was noted by Mr. O'Connell, O'Connell, O'Conner, he did mention the stormwater management stuff, and requiring the planner to provide us testimony and some documentation, how they, how they will comply.
We have other guests in the audience, and do you have any further testimony at this point?
I think, I, I understand exactly what we need to do, as, as far as talking to the planner. And, and I believe, as far as the storm management, there is some things already in play there, because there were some issues with the VFW, and we did some drainage for them back there. So actually, since the little addition on the garage, the water issues has been much, much better. We used to flood out all the time in our 33 Lincoln Boulevard basement. After they repaved Lincoln Boulevard, it was slightly higher than our driveway, so all the runoff would come off the street down into our driveway. And after we did the addition with that little storm pipe in the back, we stopped having runoff issues into the basement, no more flooding in the backyard, and it's been actually pretty good back there. We've been able to grow grass between that strip, so I think we, we got that pretty-
The 10-foot, you were-
Yeah.
What I would also suggest, sort of in the interest of fairness to the applicant, that after the board has opened to the public and heard what the public present has had to say, the board may choose to provide some feedback to the applicant before he goes to the expense of retaining a planner and an engineer to more fully document his plan. If the board has serious concerns about the potential to approve this application, they should probably let the applicant know, so that he's not wasting his time and money.
I appreciate that, I would, thank you.
I understand that. Good point, David, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, thank you very much-
Thank you.
-for your testimony. Have a seat, and I'll open the meeting to the public. Anyone would like to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hello, my name's David Mormak, M-O-R-M-A-K. I'm a past commander from 2011 to 2015, and then in 17 and 18 again. Yes, I do.
Name and address again, please.
What?
Name and address.
David Mormak, 24 Milli Drive, Clark.
Thank you.
I said, I was a past commander. When he put up his fence, I questioned Mr. Coda, why he let him put a gate to enter our property. He told me, it's his fence, he could do what it's, he wants, it would be up to us to block his gate from our side of the property. The strip of grass he talks about is only about a foot and a half wide, it's 10-foot long. Yes, he does maintain that from time to time, but we do pay a contractor to maintain the rest of the property. We tried to work out a deal with him several times. We asked him to come to our meetings, to sit down and discuss what he would do for us, and what we could do for him. He never once showed up. The current commander, he couldn't be here tonight, because he's got a medical procedure in the morning. He spoke to him several times, he spoke to his wife several times. We've told him not to park his camper in our parking lot, because it's against our insurance policy. He continues to do it, he plugs it in, I believe he has somebody living there from that time to time. Right now, he says he's not gonna use the garage for his work. He's got a truck and a trailer in our driveway right now. At times, he's had cement mixers back there, trailers back there, the dumpster we had to get rid of, because it was his construction crew that was filling it up, and his day workers were putting their trash in our, in the trash also. They come back from their job, they sit back there and drink every afternoon. I've asked them not to drink, I've asked them not to park their trucks on our property, they continue to do it, he just totally ignores us. The garage that he built, he started that in 2000, ended 2017 into 18. His plans were with that garage door, was to put in a two-car lift, so that he could park one car, raise it up, and park another car underneath it. I think he's got some antiques somewhere. We had an agreement with him at one time, he was gonna take care of some of our potholes, and we would let him, you know, park, you know, use the driveway at one time. But that never panned out, he did it one time for us, and that was it. He had a couple of extra buckets of blacktop, so he filled our pothole, a couple of potholes in. He never had any permission from anybody from the VFW, for as long as I've been there, to park his equipment on our property, or his camper. Like I said, the present, present commander, he spoke to him several times about not leaving it there also. And said, they just park there and ignore us, when we asked them not to. That's about it for now. I said, he started, in the garage, even though the peak of the roof is the same, he raised the walls about two foot, so he could get more headspace in there. So instead of the peak being like this, it's like this now. He did, like I said, he's got other intentions for that garage, not to use it to come onto our property and maintain our property, because he does not maintain our- he does not maintain our property. Other than any, that little strip of grass behind his fence, he just, because, like I said, he parks his camper back there and he tries to keep it nice. That's all I have to say.
Favor of the application.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that this testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
And then please provide your name, spell it, and your address.
My name is Teresa, T-E-R-E-S-A, Pardo, P-A-R-D-O. Myself and Dominic, we, I just want to clarify certain things that were just said. Unfortunately, I have never met this man before. We bought the house in 1998, 1999, 37 Lincoln Boulevard. In the early 2000s, we bought the house 33. The strip of land, I, I don't know the exact dimensions, how many feet it is behind my house, but I could say from 33 Lincoln all the way to Lionel. And if you do, from the back of Lionel, all the way to the first home, has to be 100, 200 feet. That has never been maintained. We have maintained that since we bought the house. On several occasions, I'm sure if somebody went back and looked at the records, we had neighbors call the police, because they did not want us to take down the shrubs and all the weeds, and we cleared it out, because they didn't want to look at the parking lot. So the Clark PD was called in, and at that time, we had a woman, I don't remember her name, and there was a member, who said he was a member, he came outside, and he agreed, he wanted, he agreed with us to clean the property. So on the Lincoln Boulevard side, and all the way in the back of Lionel Street, we have been maintaining. Number two, my RV, we have a 40-foot RV, which is in the driveway of 33 Lincoln, which is between our two houses. You can't really see it from the street unless you passed it, because that driveway is very deep. Because we own that house, we can park it there. We have the right to where we park it. Occasionally, we do pull behind. Maybe he's being confused right now, because there are people who rent out the RV in the backyard. I believe there's two of them right now, that stay there every day of the year, also along with boats, which again, has nothing to do with our property. We would never allow someone to live in our RV. There was occasionally times, if my daughter had a sleepover, or we would go out there and we'd clean it. When we come home from a trip, we empty it from behind, because on 33, as you know, there is the bump outs on Lincoln Boulevard. So we're not about to haul that in front of our house with the bump outs right at our corner. It wouldn't be safe for anyone. We wouldn't pull on Lionel, because then we, it's a dead-end street. So the reason of us pulling from behind is just for the simple fact of us to open the access, so we could get out of it, and then it goes right back into our driveway where it is now. Regarding the construction, Mr. Pardo could speak of it. We owned a yard on Linden Avenue. It's called Modena Construction. The owner, it has been there. We have rented that property, I don't know for how long. And now we just purchased another property, which is in Old Bridge, which our machines are. We don't have day laborers, as was stated. Everybody has been employees for a very long time. There is no drinking going on behind the VFW. It's been closed. And unfortunately, when we did do our mailing, everyone, which I know the lawyer who was here last time, nothing came back from the VFW. Nobody ever signed. Six was sent out, and nothing was returned back with signature. We had to send it to that VFW, as long as two or three that were out of state, I guess, who run it. The VFW has been vacant now. Maybe they did one in the last 365 days they've had an event. But again, we have been maintaining that backyard of the property, and to be honest, yes, it has been for ourselves. I don't want to sit in a yard with somebody's bushes or weeds above my fence, which I don't think anybody would want to live like that either. And there is a big mosquito population, which we know, we all live in New Jersey, that is coming from all this debris that we have back there. So I just wanted to set the record straight on those three things. And if somebody was to go by right now, you would see our RV in the driveway. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Good evening, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
And can you please provide us with your first and last name?
Michael Hritzak, 129 B Street, Cranford. I'm the senior vice commander at Post 7363 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, which is the property that we've been referring to. I've been an active officer in the post for the past four years. We've never had an application for any kind of use from the property, and we still have a charter, and we still rent out our hall. And we also have an active liquor license. It's not as active as it was before, but our intention is to repair the roof and some other things, and to become active again. So the VFW is still there, and the VFW will be there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Close that portion of the meeting. Any other comments from board members? Some suggestions have been made about a postponement, with additional information being provided?
Mr. O'Connor mentions the conditions for the variances, and I think it would be helpful for the Pardos to have a full list of that, and just make sure they have that. And the degree of proof that's needed to, to allow, to show the hardship and what's involved legally to approve this, I think would be helpful for us to clearly state that now, just to summarize what you stated before. It, it's not just, these are the things, but basically, there's, there needs to be proof, and that's why we're requesting a planner be here. There's certain things we can say, and it can be accepted, but it can't be like hearsay. It has to be proof. It has to be from a planner, has to be factual, has to be, so that we, we could then accept that as part of the record, and the reason for us to allow the variance. So I think if we just summarized what's needed, it's, Richard has this clearly stated. I don't see it signed, but I see pages two and three show, starting planning and zoning, starting with 1.1 lot coverage, 1.2 impervious coverage, 1.3. So, I mean, there's up to 2.7. So, I think it'd be fair to Mr. Pardo and Mrs. Pardo that basically, they understand this, and they go over with their planner. And as Richard said, their planner will basically explain it to them very clearly and legally, what's required to, to approve this.
Rich, was your letter to me February 3rd shared with the applicant?
Yes, it was, Mr. Chairman.
It was. All right. So they have a copy of this letter? Yes. You have gotten a copy of that?
Okay.
Okay. So basically, Tom, what you're asking for is that...
They understand this, and what's required for our next meeting, to save them time and expense.
Correct.
And what is required for us to approve the variances.
Is it the standards of proof?
Well, we, we usually have a planner come in and explain it.
No, I understand that, right. And oftentimes, I know Mr. O'Connor's lists out those standards of proof in the letters to us, but I didn't see them in, in these packages yet. I know you read them off, the attorney, but I, I didn't see them in the package anywhere, right? I think that's what you were asking for, Tom, right?
Yeah, I didn't see it.
To, to go over that again? I mean, I'm trying to understand.
Typically, on a more significant application, the township would have had a planner's letter on our side, in addition to planner's report and testimony from the applicant's side. And, and the board then would have all the information it needs to come to a conclusion. The board may feel that it already has enough information to come to a conclusion, or the board may choose to request additional testimony from a planning expert in support of the application, if it feels that the testimony from Mr. Pardo and Mr. Gutzmacher has not met the full standard of, that the board desires.
And without going to any voice vote, I think for the most part, members feel there are additional questions that a planner could answer, and would be helpful in making a final decision.
Well, that's, that was implied in our, what we discussed before. It's up to the Pardos if they want to do that or not.
In that case, do we then need a vote to postpone?
To go to an adjournment?
Adjournment and postponement to our next meeting?
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Pardo requests an adjournment to the next meeting to be able to prepare and present additional testimony, that I don't think you'd have to take a vote per se. You'd just have to make an announcement that you're going to continue to the next meeting. Not that I want to step on the attorney's toes, but I'm, I'm getting a little out of my lane there.
No, no, Rich, we appreciate it.
We always appreciate your advice, Rich. All right. Any other questions from board members, or any other thoughts, if we then request, or ask Mr. Pardo to request a postponement?
Yeah, just as long as he knows. You can either have it voted on, or ask for it to be adjourned till the next meeting.
I would formally request an adjournment to get the planning specialist in.
And to answer the questions that we have already raised.
Thank you.
Just to clarify on Mr. O'Connor's other point about the drainage, that would, assuming if there is a, it is approved, an amended application is approved, we will provide that as part of the permit package. We could have testimony to address it, but we may not have formal engineered civil drawings.
It's a little unusual at this point, because the structure that's being proposed is actually already there. But, you know, that also is up to the board, whether they want to dot that I and cross that T for their consideration, or if they want to let that go to the formal building permit application process.
Could I make a recommendation? I'd like to discuss with our civil engineer, and maybe he could have a conversation with Mr. O'Connor, to see if that is acceptable or not.
I have no problem with that. Back to you, Rich, and then...
Again, crossing out of my lane, I think Mr. Pardo may want to request that he be adjourned without the need for further notice, if he's planning on coming back to the next meeting, and that he'll provide information to Mrs. Gentry if he, for some reason, can't make that meeting, so that we can make an announcement to anyone who might be present that is interested in this particular application. And if, for some reason, he were to miss that next meeting, then he'd have to provide notice for some subsequent meeting when the information is available.
I will absolutely do my best to make sure that it stays to the next meeting, so we don't have to do the whole mail-out, because that's a, that's a big process.
And then I think you also should note, so to the concern about needing to get the, you know, additional, like surveys, or whatever kind of stuff like that, it's, you don't need, your planner is going to need to explain and get, and just provide reasons why they should allow these, you know, whether it be the use variance or the bulk size variance. So it's, you know, they're an expert witness. So, you know, we accept their testimony when they're, when they're sworn in. But somebody, you know, obviously, I don't, we don't expect you to know this, but they're going to need to, you know, examine everything, and then come back to the board and explain to them, you know, what are these special reasons that they should give an exception for those?
I totally understand.
So that make, I just want to make sure, you know, makes sense to you guys.
I totally understand. He's going to, in professional words, he's going to tell you guys what's the adverse or the, the good or the bad of the whole project, and why we should and shouldn't, and how it would affect the neighborhood. I totally understand that. And, and I think I would talk to Roger and kind of, I kind of know how I want to say it, but I'm sure it's not going to be the way you guys need to hear it. It's going to be the contractor way. It's going to be all right. But, yes, I, I totally understand that.
Mr. Pardo, I, I think it's fair to say that the board has serious concerns about allowing the garage door that fronts on the VFW property to remain without, and if it were to remain, it would require that you enter into a, a formal agreement with the VFW to provide an access easement.
I totally understand. And, and again, I will, I, I'm actually going to try to talk to Mike and, and the VFW. I'm not sure exactly how that chain of command is, or who the property, how that's all, you know, run, but I, I will make a line of communication with them. And worst-case scenario, I don't have a problem closing that off, and then just doing, you know, the gate, or whatever we need to do to, to keep that up.
That may be something you want to resolve before you...
Absolutely. I'm going to have a conversation. That's my next step.
I would agree with you on that, Rich, and would ask for that. One, my bigger concerns too, is the side setbacks. You know, having something right, literally right on the property line.
Yes.
Is not acceptable in the town. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I also think that if you were to close up that door, that you should have some plans and some testimony from Mr. Gutzmacher about how you're, how you're going to dress that side of the building up, and continue the fencing back around it, in the event that that's what you choose to do.
Correct. Yeah, so, so right now, that, the, the fence on 37 dies off at the garage, and the fence on my neighbor's side dies off on the other side. So when the garage was there existing, the VFW just basically had that white block wall that was basically the property line. They closed that all off. And obviously, we would paint that and make it look, you know, nice, so presentable. Yep.
Any other comments from any of the board members? If not, we'll accept your request for a postponement until our next meeting, and you will notify Janet.
April 24th.
Thank you, Jen.
April 24th.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions? We have no resolutions tonight. If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, sir. All right.
And myself, or somebody from the VFW, get a copy of that mail-out letter that they said they sent to us that we never received?
The letter that was sent to...
They said they sent the letter to the VFW. I have no idea.
Mrs. Pardo mentioned that.
The lawyer, last time she took all the copies, they were six mailed out, they all were, we turned them in the first meeting. They were inside the file. I don't have them made return.
They were getting...
If you're referring to a maintenance letter, that would be from the building department, no?
I think he's actually talking about the notice of the meeting letter.
Oh.
Mrs. Pardo, you're referring to a letter that was sent to the VFW? Oh, okay. Okay. Other than the notification to the neighbors within 100-foot radius, had you attempted to, and have you any documentation of attempting to reach out to the VFW? Okay, fine. Anything else on this case or our meeting tonight? If not, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Thank you all for your time this evening.